Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting in West Valley City Council. We note that we have a quorum present. Excuse tonight our councilwoman Karen Lang and councilmember Steve Buehler. With that, we'll begin with an opening ceremony. We turn to councilmember Don Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've been watching as little of the news as I could this last couple of weeks, hearing all of the animosity and things coming out of the eastern part of our country, I think it's time we took a minute and as we repeated the Pledge of Allegiance, remember that that's what we're here for. We're here to support the country, not any one person. And so would you please stand with me and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanksgiving is coming up. It's been called one of the true broad American holidays that almost everyone can celebrate. Although we've had the Native Americans now celebrate a calendar one to that. But regardless of your religion or your culture, almost, you can celebrate Thanksgiving and enjoy it. But it seems like with all our holidays, there's always someone that doesn't mind it. Anyway, with that, I don't see any scout troops here or any elected officials, so we'll go to our minutes of November 19th. Motion on the minutes, please.
Move for approval of the minutes of November 19th.
Any comments? Seeing none? All in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
If both say no, passage unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing November 30th as Small Business Saturday. The council has taken a position on that. We support the Small Business Saturday. It will be November 30th this Saturday. Just a couple of items. There are almost 2,400 businesses in West Valley City that employ less than 50 employees. That represents half of all the businesses registered in West Valley City. Or thereabouts. These businesses employ almost 15,000 employees, which represents one-fourth of all the employees in West Valley City. And then this year, so far, 322 new small businesses, and they employ almost 1,000 new workers. So we do support those local businesses. They are critical to our economy. Therefore, as the mayor and city council of West Valley City, we hereby proclaim and recognize November 30th as Small Business Saturday, and we encourage our residents to support small businesses in West Valley City. Especially this Saturday. That's the traditional day, kind of the small business, if you will, Black Friday kind of concept. But certainly to support those businesses throughout the year. They add much to our economy. With that then, we will go to our comment period. Looks like we have perhaps some new people, I'm not sure. So we remind you, five minutes, address comments to the mayor. And 30 minutes total. There's no discussion back and forth. It's your time to use as you want, and we will listen. So we'll begin with, I believe it's Darren Cliff.
Yes, I'm Darren Cliff. According to the city website, the purpose of ordinance and quote, "The purpose of ordinance enforcement is to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of West Valley City. This purpose includes protecting neighborhoods against hazardous and deteriorating conditions that contribute to the degradation of neighborhood property values," end quote. What this purpose may sometimes lead to is the infringement of private property rights, the private property rights of city residents. I've come here today to discuss one city ordinance that I believe is an infringement on the property rights of property owners and residents. Code 24-2-111A reads, "All vehicles which are inoperable, unlicensed, or have expired registration must be stored in a completely enclosed structure, such as a garage, or shed, or moved from the property. This includes car parts and engine parts." I am a landlord who used to live in West Valley City. I still own a property located in the city. And I recently received notice of this code violation due to my tenant owning a vehicle which had flat tire, and it was an unregistered vehicle. I quickly worked with the code enforcement officer and my tenant to get the matter taken care of. She removed the vehicle from the property within the designated timeframe. Despite me being glad that my tenant took care of the issue, I was saddened that I had to warn her with a potential fine that the city would have given to me. Her vehicle was of no health or safety concern to the community. Because of this, because this was her property, and it was no, in my opinion, no risk of harming the community, I don't quite understand the need to force a resident to be rid of their property. For example, if I own a vehicle that I am repairing and I have no other place to store it, then on the driveway, I feel the city shouldn't have a right in ordering me to tell me what I can or can't do with it. If I have a vehicle that is operable in the driveway, not in use, but the registration happens to be expired, I don't quite understand why the city should care about the presence of such a vehicle if it's in an open area, if it's not enclosed. As long as I'm not exposing harmful materials to the neighborhood, I feel that the city could use the law enforcement resources elsewhere. I recommend that the city council reconsider the specific ordinance and other similar ordinances that do not enhance sensible health and safety concerns, but instead may infringe on private property rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I apologize, but I'm not going to do well with this. It looks like Fihad Al Al?
Ali.
Oh, Ali.
Yes.
Okay.
How many minutes I got? Oh, that's here. Good evening. There's two issues. I mean, I have quite a few issues, but I would like to bring the two issues straight up and make two comments. The two issues, I came to you before and I told you about my dog. I remind you again. My dog, Boop Gold, and urinate, urinate perfume. My dog will cost you $777 million, and that's if you are smart. You know, if you are not smart, racketeering, racketeering. Racketeering has 18 grounds. Any of those could constitute racketeering. Your city manager, for example, he is deep into racketeering. The three gentlemen here, sitting there from my brother over there, here. When the wise man consisting here from the councilman, he looked at them and he said, "What are we gonna do about the guy's dog?" "The guy's dog, my dog." Well, that dog has got to me. And not because of me, because of the dog. You see, the problem is not me. Really, I'm over it. And actually, I don't like to have a dog. You know, it kills my mobility, my movements. But the dog itself, when he sees me, he knows I am a fact, and to him, I'm a god. You know, and he's not happy with other people. You know, like when he sees me, he's a different dog. And when he's with other people, his tail is down, and scared, and confused. And God knows how many times he made it to the shelter. Only God knows, you know, and they lie. So that's one of the problems. Now, the second issue I want to bring to you is, I plan this Christmas by the name of God, the Creator of all, to be inside, to spend Christmas indoor, inside. I never stepped a feet in a shelter in my life. And I'm not about to step a feet in a shelter. That's why I clamped in a protest outside for 10 years very much. But age has taken its tour at me very much. So I need to be inside very much for my health. Therefore, I intend to be in Christmas inside. I have to find some places, studio or something. But I have to raise the money. For me to be able to raise the money, I need some form of stability. Therefore, I asked the city council and the city mayor to allow me to batch my tent back where I had it roguely for six years, and brought peace and safety to the area. Not even a cigarette was missing, not even a spoon. After I left, go and check the area. You know, I chased all the drug dealers out of there, the drug garbage, all the criminals, prostitutes. But that wasn't good enough for some. Anyway, I'm forced to batch my tent back in the same spot, far away from everybody, right in the river, from now until Christmas, before Christmas, so I could find my sleeping bag dry when I come back. So I could go and find me some work, probably cutting grass, doing things, you know, those hard jobs, to accumulate enough money to rent for Christmas. And I want to have Thanksgiving cooking, so I would like to batch my tent, and I would like your permission for that. That's the second issue. The third issue. For you brothers, I assure you, whoever running against you in next election, if he is a valuable person, you will lose. I guarantee you that. A new city manager, if I'm in your shoes, I quit. Get my dog, so we could have something to talk about. You do not get my dog, whom I found three times, and you failed to show up. Your animal control failed to show up, your police station failed to show up. I find my dog. And what do you want me to do? I let the guy walk with it. But you, I mean, take it to my hand, and you're already accusing me with assaults, even though I am the one who did assaults. So let's have some straight facts. The last comment I want to make for you, clearly, whoever managing, and again, the city manager, is not doing a great job, because you have missed, you have missed millions of dollars, millions of dollars in public relation. You had it for free. I told you last time. I told you I'm dancing in that corner. Do you know who's the man jumping started the revolution in Iraq and Beirut, Lebanon? Moi. Yes, sir. Ask UCI. Say, "Who's the guy jumping started it? Who's the guy feeding it? Who's the guy describing to the rebels how to do, what to do?" I would love to hear.
Thank you very much that your time was responded.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Josh Cameron. I think I got that right.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm coming to you a little bit less D. Schneider-like, a little more professional. Mr. Pyle, I took the time to listen to the recorded session last week, and again, I appreciate you reflecting on my words. And I try to use my words to inspire. I think, and one thing I really appreciate, Mayor Bigelow, that you mentioned that, there are areas that we obviously overlap, whether we find that we need to celebrate holidays or not. And there's a lot of overlap, especially if we look at ourselves on a Venn diagram. I think a lot of it just comes down to education. I know that there's people here that plan on speaking specific to air quality. There was a City Weekly report that said that Salt Lake County is the second most toxic county in the nation per capita, which is sad. But in the reality, we have, you know, about a billion dollars of subsidies going to fossil fuel industries, while the working class work paycheck to paycheck at about 78% rate. So we have a system where we're giving money to people who don't need it and don't have money for people who do need it, because of potential education issues. Now, I really just brought that up just because I don't know how many people one knew that we give about a billion dollars and actually spend more money in subsidies than we do on the Pentagon, specific to fossil fuels. But I think that there are realistic ways that we can actually harness the power of our neighborhoods, and our schools, and our community arts projects, in order to help clean up the air and be champions in this. One thing in particular, there's a really fascinating TED Talk that says how to build a 100-year forest in 10 years. And they specifically do this through engineering. They understand through mathematics and engineering and just the different times of the year, where the sun's gonna, sun's gonna be shining, and they can build, set up, and the trees to grow to where they don't block out light for other trees trying to grow in the same area. Effectively make it so dense that it's nearly impossible for somebody to actually walk through. The purpose of that is that it actually scrubs our land. Things like willows and poplars are very good for cleaning the soil. You know, places, you know, granted, not necessarily West Valley, but you know, we're not unaccustomed to sledgepits like in Rose Park, or some of the nuclear testing in Daybreak. And you know, we've got waste here. And I think that harnessing the true power of a creative mind, especially from a child, to really input and see that this tree, this 100-year forest, and even just putting vacant lots and planting trees there, or dedicating actual acres of land, and I don't want to tell you that I necessarily know better than you, Mr. Pyle, or be the best place to implement that. But I would hope that our creative ingenuity and our need to really want to tackle things, and again, in overlapping way, I mean, I'm sure many of you know that it's actually Richard Nixon who implemented the EPA, which was a pretty wonderful, amazing piece of bipartisan or possibly even nonpartisan legislation. So there's real values in, you know, environmental implications, environmental energy, on both people who identify with the right, left, or even people who don't buy into politics. And I'd love to see some really creative ways and say, you know what, that Mayor Bigelow and that Wayne Pyle, these guys know what going on. You know why? Because my kids now have a better future. My kids, not only that, but you know what? Mayor Bigelow put up metal on my kids', you know, on my kid's neck, because he actually found out the perfect lock to do this. He actually worked with, you know, maybe engineers at the University of Utah where I work, in order to really use our, you know, our institutional knowledge that we have at our disposal on a local and even a state level. Because ultimately, we're all connected. Whether, you know, we want to admit it or not, you know, our pollution's gonna go to southern Utah, going to northern Idaho, and it just doesn't stay local. We will breathe the immediate ramifications, eat the immediate ramifications, and drink the immediate ramifications. And, you know, we see some of this connections, again, not necessarily with just West Valley, but even, you know, I used to work in the oil fields up in Vernal, and my brothers and sisters down in Duchenne right now are on a water boil alert. And so I think that there's real ways for us to be real innovators and show the rest of the municipalities and the cities here in the state how we can be real leaders and tap into people who really want to help. And if there's anyone who wants to help, it's a kid, and especially if somebody from a position of authority recognizes that kid and validates, you know, their existence and validates their contribution to a very serious problem, you probably got a supporter for life. And that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we had on our list. Was there anyone else here to speak publicly? Yes. If you will state your name and...
My name is Jessie Cox. And am I allowed to ask you a question?
Not during this time. You can afterwards.
Okay. So not knowing if the council took a vote on HB 411, then I would speak in support of that. And even, even though I don't know that, but I would say that in the future, there's going to be other opportunities and other ways to take a leadership role and to be a part of the community of cities and towns. I brought the, the City Weekly has a story, the lead story, about air quality in Salt Lake City. I'm not sure that people on West Valley City are tuned in to what's happening in Salt Lake City's press. So I brought that, just in case. And then the attached paper is a summary of the story itself. So it's briefer, it's easier to scan through it and get the gist of what it is. And that's really all that I, that I want to present to you, and thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? There aren't many here, so it's pretty easy. We'll close the public comment portion, come back to our city manager. Any comments?
Not tonight, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. To the council, any comments?
I would just clarify that the council has not taken a formal vote on that issue yet.
Yes, and in fact, now as we've got that, we have had a request for a change in policy on our ordinance, one of our ordinances, and whether we should add that to a future agenda item.
I think we could take a look at that one and see how we can, you know, maybe to visit and see, we can study what that code number, 24-2-111.
Okay, if so, then what we'll do then is put that on our potential future agenda items as a possible discussion item for next week. The request on the dog and different things, those seem to be specific requests, would be handled by department rather than a change in policy. So we'll leave that to have those individual departments work with an individual during regular hours. And then the clean air, that issue is still of interest, I think, to some of us. And let's put that on the potential future agenda items. Is it already on there?
Yeah, we already have a presentation with the staff schedule for that for next week, Mayor.
Oh, I haven't seen the agenda for next week, so... Half the time you're not just a step ahead of me, but several steps, so thank you. So with that then, we will move forward. We'll go now to ordinance 19-47. This is the repeal, is to repeal and reclassify certain ordinances, modify criminal punishments, and add mental states for criminal culpability. There were some changes at the state level with regards to this, and once the staff was looking at that, they found that some of our ordinances, we needed to modify the level of severity by either increasing or decreasing the level and the penalties associated with those, as well as adding this mental states for criminal culpability, which has not been included in the past, which we think was a good thing. Most of this is technical, although it is some policy change, but it seemed to be well-received. And so that you're aware, these are items that we studied last week, and we studied some items earlier this evening for our council meeting next week. So we may not spend a lot of time on these, because we've already had some discussion on them. But that will complete the introduction on that. Plus, any other comments the council wants to add? It's in their control now.
Mayor, I would move for approval of resolution, or excuse me, of ordinance 19-47.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Thinks this is a positive move, and so with that, we'll go to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fadis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Werfel?
Yes.
And Mayor Doran?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to our resolutions. We have Resolution 19-451, to approve a subscription term agreement with Paylocity Corporation Enterprise for the city's payroll program. This actually will cover a lot more items. This is a software package that we will be purchasing to use in many different situations, including payroll. It is our current systems. We have multiple ones, not communicating well. This program, which will cost $153,780. It will come out of our HR budget, and it will take some manual processes and automate them. Let's see. Besides payroll, it's time and attendance, applicant tracking, compensation and benefits, all within this system. So just looking, see what else was in there. This is really a step forward in all of our computer software to do this, but other issues as well, that we have some other programs that have not worked as well as we thought they would, and they are not supported very well. This one is a more modern one that will receive support, and we'll be able to train our people on and be able to accomplish a lot more and save time and money. That is the introduction to the issue. To the council.
Given the imminent need, as well as, at least in my mind, the satisfactory explanation of the cybersecurity issues that were brought up last night?
Oh, yes.
I'm in favor, and I would move to approve Resolution 19-151.
Okay. Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Yes, the security issue was a big one, and that was satisfied. We definitely want to protect any information we might have on employees, on those who do business with the city where any confidential information might be held, and this will help us do that in a better way. So with that, to our city recorder.
Councilman Werfel?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Fadis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to Resolution 19-152. This is to authorize the purchase of a tractor from Deere and Company for use by the Parks Department. Hurry, you can get that up here. Sometimes I get them done ahead of time, but not this one. So this is a front-loading tractor. We have had a 30-year-old tractor that we use regularly, one of them. And it was used for many aspects, aeration, seeding, digging holes, trenching, loading bulk materials. It broke down earlier this year, and we're having extreme difficulty even getting parts for it. And so they had to switch over to manual labor to accomplish some of those tasks. So it's time to replace this with this $48,515 tractor. And that's probably all I need to say with that. That piece of equipment is used for many, many different purposes, saves a lot of manpower. With that, to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 19-153.
152. Yeah, okay. Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fadis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Werfel?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have our consent agenda. These are normally routine items that we do over and over, and have low financial impact typically, and are not, do not change any policy. We have four items, and we will typically deal with those as a group. Resolution 19-152, to reappoint Janice Fisher to the Magna Mosquito Abatement District, January 2nd of the coming year through January 1st of 2024, a four-year appointment. Resolution 19-154, this will nominate Karen Lang and Corey Rushton for appointment to the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District Board of Trustees. Resolution 19-155, this is another right-of-way purchase agreement and warranty deed. This is out on 7200 West, 2573 South, at Bagley Lane or subdivision, where we've done numerous of these before. Resolution 19-156, a public sidewalk lighting utility easement from Smiths Food and Drug at 4065 South Redwood Road. They're doing some additions, modifications to their store there, and with that, that triggers some needed... And with that, that triggers some needed items to be done along the right-of-way there. Those are the items. These are fairly routine, straightforward. To the council.
I move for approval of the items of our consent agenda.
Property force, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfield?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We appreciate you all being here tonight. That concludes our business for tonight. We do not have a closed session. And so many people were anxious to get to their holidays early. They're on the streets. It was a rush hour at 3 o'clock. So anyway, with that, our last motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. It passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight, and you have an enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday.